Call this meeting in order to the pleasure of the Deacons. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of our Constitution, our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rockwell.
Fairanwell.
Here.
Fairanwell, here. Osling.
Here.
Osling, here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here. Carter.
Here.
Carter, here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Hulos.
Here.
Hulos, here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here. Frausto.
Here.
Frausto, here. Willado.
Here.
Willado, here. Viera.
Here.
Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Hawley. Here. Thirteen persons.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to approve the city council business with the date of August the 22nd, 2017. We have a motion by Alden Hawley, or second Alden Carr. Any questions? Rockwell.
Fairanwell.
Aye.
Fairanwell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Hulos.
Aye.
Hulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Willado.
Aye.
Willado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Thirteen persons. Thank you very much. Council.
Good evening. You are all welcome as visitors to tonight's meeting. You are politely reminded the purpose of the meeting is for the deliberation of the city council and the mayor regarding city governance and business. If you intend to speak, please approach the podium, announce your name and address once given the floor by the mayor. Please be further advised that comments may be limited to three minutes or forty to the appropriate city personnel for individualized response.
Thank you very much, council. Need your name and address.
My name is Badmanteig. I live in 2448 Walnut Street. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and other members of the city council. I'm here tonight to discuss an item on the agenda. It is line item six. Report of City Officials' Presentation Resolutions, specifically Mayor, item three, An Ordinance Related to Establishment Organization of the Confidence of Fee and Fine Schedule in the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, Water/ Sewer Rate Increase. I'll try and be quick. This is an incredibly important subject, I think, to get in, in the three minutes that the attorney of names is allowing us. First off, I'm curious who actually puts the agendas together?
The staff, the directors.
Okay. I'm just curious why this would be under, and I'm no politician, why it would be under the mayor's business as opposed to under the finance committee? Because doesn't this generate from the finance committee?
They were under discussion from finance project.
Okay. And this is a new finance committee. How long have they been together now? Four, five months?
Since the new election, probably since, what, May?
Okay. So, this sounds like a rather important topic. I've not seen very many details on what they intend to do with this, actually, funds they raise, other than, you know, improve infrastructure, sewer streets and things like that. Did this just come up in the last five months? Where was the previous finance committee on this? Why wasn't this noticed before?
I was not aware of it.
You were not aware?
No.
While you were president, or whatever it's called, committee head?
Right. I'm just as surprised as you are.
Really? How about you, Mr. Donahue? You're shaking your head yes, you're just as surprised?
Yeah. I do. Yeah.
Okay. You know, you go around and ask residents to vote for you. It's the most precious thing we have in this country is our vote. I've tried to attend several meetings and I've had committee meetings. Many of them didn't happen to lack of a forum. Why would you ask the residents to give you their vote if you don't put the time in? How does this surprise you? The accountants that are advising this are new accountants, brought in and supposedly cleaned everything up a couple of years ago.
Mr. Badmanteig, in fact, the, before we clarify, we do have a new accounting firm that deals with municipal accounts. So, that is a new accountant that's here almost daily, and they're the ones that recommended, from my understanding, have recommended this not only to my office, but to the finance committee, and then, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman Finance, they came and did a couple of presentations at your committee, correct? And I attended one of those committee meetings where they gave a presentation, and then I had to leave. So, I think that's how it all started.
When was the last finance committee meeting? September 5th, was it? Okay. Who posted that information, such as agendas and the dates of the meetings, on the city's website? Would that be you ready? Are you responsible for that, your office?
I do post some of that.
Some of that?
It's posted outside the front door in the meeting place in the front of our city council.
Some of that? Who posts what you don't?
There's several people that post any of it.
There is. Do they all report to you, sir? No. Okay. Because that was the Tuesday after Labor Day weekend, I was out of town. I'd seen chatter about this on social media, that there would be a meeting that Tuesday. So, I went to the city's website. I think September 5th, and I, maybe I made a mistake, but it's blank. Checked previous months, the dates are all in there, time, what committee meeting. I go to where the agendas are posted. Not there. I think this is a pretty important subject. And if I were skeptical, I'd say, gee, was this an oversight or was it planned? Yes, you posted it in City Hall and on the building here. But again, isn't this kind of important? Whoever's responsible for doing that, should they have done that? Makes the committee a panic. Colonel.
Mr. Badmanteig, we are aware that the website is in need of correction, so I apologize for that.
Okay. I don't think you should do that type of work until you don't have to have the information. I appreciate your apology. I mean, make a suggestion, for example, the firm I work for, we're going through some changes on the website. We notify right up front, hey, website under construction, may not find all the information you need. Maybe we should think about doing that. Be a little more proactive. Speaking of social media.
Go ahead.
I saw on one social website that you, Mr. Mayor, are actually considering asking that this be taken off the agenda tonight, so voters can take it, or that it at least be tabled, so that there could be time for public meetings before it's brought back up for a vote.
In fact, Mr. Badmanteig, I have a couple of emails here, that I received, probably ten of them. I can tell exactly one, two, three, four people who left messages requesting that, and I think, there's a petition out there, from my understanding. I think that would probably be the best interest for all of us, I guess, especially from the aldermen who are mentioning they had not aware of it, that this not be brought up, and maybe we request, or I request, a meeting of the whole, where that can be addressed for everyone, and clarify it out. We get input, again, limited input from the public, to keep it moving, and then discussion among us, and then we bring it back as soon as possible. Again, let me make this, again, I take no length of your time.
Sure.
One has...
Ms. Raines has to stop me, she has to...
I'll be, I'll be.
Please, the chair.
Here's the situation. As we know, Blue Island is an old, old city. We're older than Chicago. Our infrastructure is very old, okay? Whether it's myself, future mayor, or whatever, has to deal with the crumbling infrastructure in the city. I don't think any of us, any of us want to fall back to how certain infrastructures were neglected in years past. We have to be proactive, okay? Again, whether it's this increase, this amount, or a graduated one, or no amount, is going to have to be addressed either by this administration or anyone following it. No matter what, we can't get away with it. It's going to come from our water lines, our sewer lines, our bridges, our residential streets, et cetera. Again, given all of that, if there is no increase, we're stuck in the same pace that we're right now, depending on local, county, state, and federal funding, and we're competing with all the other municipalities. I just showed our alderman Thompson here, and alderman Osling. We were granting a CBG for Longwood, 200,000. This is one example, okay? But again, it's been almost six years that we've been requesting this, okay? Six years before, when I was in Alden. But we finally got it. I wish it was more, but it's not. Again, we're competing with every single municipality in Longwood County, and given the budget crisis that had been in the state, there's money that had been allocated, or by the water tower on the north side, that was cut by the government. It was ready, shovel ready to go. Streets, again, I hear complaints, and that was part of my, us, running, our main objective for the next four years is infrastructure. Question is, how are you going to fund it? Whether it's this way or another way, it's going to have to be addressed. One way or the other, or else we got another division street or another channel street issue. I think personally, it should be a graduated thing, but I'm willing to let the public input with the approval of the council, and set it for a special meeting as early as next week, if we can do it, and then discuss it and then bring it back.
Well, I hope you're successful in getting it done. It's an incredibly important subject, and I'll tell you what to do. I mean, I'll already get it done next week, if it takes time to get some details together. No details. Nothing wrong with it. It seems to me too often, this current council, committee, or council of all the people, they kind of throw out generics. Oh, we'll put the 1% sales tax in, yeah, a lot of specifics what you're going to do. Doesn't seem much sense in the way I follow up what's happening. Tom, you even offered to start a citizens committee, you invited me to join that committee, to monitor and to help have input on that, how the funds are spent. You've ignored my emails, finally enough, asking when that's going to start, and if I could be a part of it. Let's hope that regardless of whether it passes tonight or not, you give the people some more details. I want to know exactly what you're going to be spending on. The accountants, have they provided you a number of manholes that have to be replaced? Or have they reported you, or supplied you with any exact expenses or projections on how much revenue these new fees will generate?
Mr. Badmanteig, if I may interrupt you. Our city engineer, we have an audit, and I requested it almost...
I know that exists, yeah.
A year and a half, almost two years ago.
Yep.
Where they go street by street, worst street to the best street in the city of Blue Island. We have it highlighted in colors, which are the worst, moderate, and also all the way to the less, the newest streets, okay?
Okay.
That's part of the issue. I'm not saying it's a whole, but that's part of our, the diagram or the chart. Again, the industrial base that City of Blue Island had, when Clark, modern dropped Forge, all these that have left Cook County, for no fault of the city, has changed the dynamics of the city. We have dramatically lost the income that the city relied upon. Again, what previous administrations did, or failed to do with that money for that infrastructure, I can't respond to that. All I can say is, so right now, I believe citizen input is very important, and I've tried through this last four years, now this half year, to keep that always, keep it open, and try to be with the public on the street, hearing them out. And I've heard you. And I'm going to say this, so you know I'm a little ahead of it, but I'm going to say it this way. Friday, I wasn't here, okay? That's normally, normally Friday's night is when the agenda's prepared. The firefighter thing was there, I know the Marin Valley thing was there, okay? So, I didn't set up the last final thing. Now, I wasn't here for this reason, I'm going to tell you why. If you remember, city council, I had mentioned that my uncle, my niece, and my cousin were coming from Mexico. My uncle was the only remaining brother my father has, okay? The main plan is to bring them right before Labor Day and spend time with them here. Unfortunately, and sadly, my niece, the night before she was leaving from Mexico City to here, suffered an emergency that her small intestine burst.
Wow.
Critical, and she died Wednesday night.
Finally.
So, from Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the family's gone through a living hell, okay? Especially my uncle back in Mexico. So, that's why I wasn't here, maybe physically and mentally, because of that issue. And there's another issue, and I'm going to mention it here. Thursday, Friday night, and I want to thank our 911 dispatchers, from the bottom of my heart. I've known the young lady, a good friend of mine, for 30 years. She's a supervisor at United, had suffered some medical problems in June, got well, she went back to work. She called me Friday, not knowing what our family was going through, and I didn't mention it to her. And she's telling, I started to hear almost suicidal on her side. So, one hour went by, and it was killing me inside, what should I do? What should I do? I knew what I had to do, and that's when our 911 dispatchers helped me through it. They get, I want to thank them sincerely. They got in Cook County, because they thought the Splains, she was in the Splains by herself. They got in Cook County, and Cook County says, you know what, it's not a responsibility, it's the Splains Police Department. So, they broke the ice, telling them, you know what, this isn't a free call, this is the mayor of Blue Island calling, he's worried about so-and-so, can you do a wellness check? And I want to thank everyone down the line, including our dispatcher. They found her, are still alive, okay?
That's right.
When I got a call from the detective that night, he goes, when was the last time you spoke to her? What happened? What did she tell you? And I'm thinking, go work. Why is he asking me these questions? Then he goes, she's here, she's drugged, but she's here, she's alive, we're rushing her to the hospital. So, again, I want to thank our 911 dispatchers for a lifesaving story there. And that's why, given I think, it didn't happen that way.
Yeah. Sorry to go, man. Okay.
So, the question is, I think we should, we need time.
Yep.
Discuss this, the same way that was done with the 1%.
Yeah.
But here's the other thing. I don't want to hear from the residents saying, well, I got this problem, I got this problem, I got this problem. Well, you know what? Because we don't have the funds, okay? We, I want to thank our finance department, everybody else, we've done a tremendous drive to rein in expenses. Are we perfect? No. Do we have to do more? Possibly, and my directives to the directors and to the department heads, if there's a need that we can save, we got to do it, and we better do it, because we got all of you looking at us whether or not we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Then, then, if we can show we've done what we could, and we need more funding, then maybe it is the $5 more for seniors, $7 more for up to 2,000 gallons, I think gallons, or something like that.
Yeah.
Rate, something like that, and it keeps going up, per month. Or is it something gradual versus the total amount? And those are things, again, I'm not going to discuss with specifics, but that, I think, needs to be discussed so everybody's informed. And you're right, we all need to be informed, including myself. I'm not an accountant. Okay, I'm not an accountant, and I came to their meeting, their finance committee meeting, and I said, you know what, given the political and everything that's going in county, national state, it's the wrong time. Well, if we're wrong, it's the wrong time to try to bring something in like this, you better do it gradually, because or else it's going to be problematic.
I agree. I think, I speak for a lot of folks, but let me, we just need more detail on what's going to be spent on. And again, even the revenue currently, your pressure, any projections on how much revenue this could bring in?
We're going to have, you know what, Mr. Badmanteig, I'm going to have to cut you.
All right. My last comment is, again, on social media, there seems to be a lot of back and forth on whether this is a tax or a fee. I don't care, I don't think residents care what you call it. We have to pay it of our hard-earned money. I'll just send it there, and thank you for your patience, and I'm sorry you have to get so involved in all these things. I would leave you with one piece of advice, I've gone through cost cutting and trying to prove efficiencies in private industries several times, whether because of recessions or new company takes over. I hate to have to say this, but my heart of hearts, I think you have to approve every cut, beginning at a certain dollar, that'd be 100 or 200, just so that no one who maybe disagrees with your philosophy tries to cut a service that could make you look bad.
Thank you very much.
Make sure you're timed.
Name and address, please.
Hi. Jude Coyle, 15108 Costner, Mid Locust. As you can tell by the pink flyers, it's that time of the year, and Angels Touch invites everyone to our benefit on October 1st. $15 donation at Double Play Lounge. One more time, music, Tommy Jerez and Alex Francois, and Raffles, and It's a Good Time. Come, enjoy yourself, and donate to a good cause. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Name and address, please.
Rachel Roscoe, 11957 South Longwood. I want to comment, I was at the finance meeting, and I have to admit, wasn't none of this discussed there. That's all I have to say about that. But I do want to also comment, we know the taxes do go up, fees go up, but the biggest problem in Blue Island, and this is my problem, is that we never see what, what happens. The golf course is supposed to be self-sufficient, now it's, it's in the red. We get the counters, they were supposed to help the streets, the streets and sidewalks and stuff, they still tore up. If you raise our taxes, we should at least see some progress in the city. Over there in Longwood, where I live at, you did tell me that that was in your plans.
Thank you.
All right, and I appreciate that, because I think I pay a lot of taxes to live on the street that looks like slums. But that's, that's my opinion. But I came up here because we're having a safety meeting, a disaster-ready plan, safety meeting, to discuss the new 911, and cold red. It's on Thursday the 14th of this week, at Evangelist Community Church, 2237 West 120th. We invited a lot of people. If you're not familiar with disaster-ready plan, it's a plan to get your house ready just in case you do have a disaster. The city has plans, and some of the plans, I guess they will tell us. If it's a disaster, where do you go? What churches set up to handle a situation like that? And also, John Rita, he'll be there, and he'll be giving us more information about the new 911. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Paul Carr, go ahead.
Mr. Roscoe, what time does the meeting start?
It starts at 7 o'clock.
Thank you very much. Name and address, please.
George Durnus, this is in regards to 625 Western Avenue. It's the closed Walgreens, and we've been trying to get a grocery store down there almost five months now. Thank you for listening, Mr. Mayor, and my condolences to your loss.
Thank you.
We just recently lost our mom, so I understand. I'm kind of just at a loss for words, because this has been going on with the City of Blue Island since two weeks before elections. Two weeks before elections, this very presentation was given to Jason Barry, who I understand isn't here anymore. I know that he left on July 5th. After 30 conversations with Jason Barry, he's also, he also visited a number of our stores, we were told certain things that have never transpired. We were on contract with this property, put up earnest money on this property, had paid archetypes, have paid EPAs, have got a financing in place, talked to American Metro South Hospital, because we're trying to form a community wellness with the hospital, where two or three times a month, they'll be coming into the grocery store, doing blood work, doing eye examinations, doing nutritional things, basically, everything that we've done in other stores. This is our, this will be my 15th store that I'm involved in, and I've dealt with probably six different municipalities or cities. And I just don't understand the disconnect from April, before elections, to today that I'm, that I'm in front of everyone. There's been numerous emails sent in regards to the time constraints that were involved with this. We put up $50,000 in earnest money, they wanted another $50,000 to go hard, because we were done with our due diligence process. I lost the contract. Five weeks ago, I was asked to deliver this package because it was misplaced, and it happens, I understand that. Jason left, I understand that. It was misplaced five weeks ago, five weeks have gone by, and I can't get an answer on three, all I wanted is a letter from the city, a feel-good letter to make us feel good. We know the city's economic condition. We didn't come asking for anything, guys, zero. Here's, here's what was offered to us, so I'm very, very clear to everyone. A, a recommendation that are on a Class 8 for real estate taxes. We all know what's going on in Cook County in regards to real estate taxes. That would basically be a, once we're done with the rehabilitation, so everyone understands, this will provide between 40 and 50 jobs, full-time, and 15 to 20 part-time jobs, and it's a $5.5 million project. It's a big project. What the Class 8 does is, it's a support letter from the city to the county to acknowledge that taxes will only hit, call it, a certain level, or will be reduced if they skyrocket. Number one, nothing from the city. We're not asking for grants, we're not asking for TIF, we're not asking the city to sell bonds. I mean, like I said, it's not my specialty, but I've been down this road before. The second thing that we asked for the city, if it could do it, and we were told it was already approved through council, now I understand that it's not, was a rebate of our taxes, our sales taxes. At the end of the day, it's based on our performance anyway, it's something that the city didn't have. It was offered to us, we didn't ask for it, it was offered to us.
By whom?
Jason Barry. Over an extended period of time, so it doesn't really even affect the city, I mean, it's minuscule. And the third thing that we were asking for was the waiver of permits and fees. Miniscule.
Wasn't also some mediation in case there was something in the project that we would have to respond for that?
No.
You didn't ever ask for that?
Never. Never, but more importantly, Mr. Mayor, as you know, we've gone back and forth for five weeks. I'm not on contract anymore. Look, as far as I'm concerned, and just call me crazy, there are important things in the city. One, hospitals. Two, schools. Actually, schools, first, equal hospital. A police department and a fire department. Grocery stores are right there. I just don't understand this. I've never been down this road before, and I'm begging you guys to help me out, because unless I can get a letter which makes us feel somewhat comfortable that we can agree to something, I can't go on contract. We've already spent, eh, right around $36,000. Everything is done. The Illinois Food Fund has already approved a loan. The Chicago Community Loan Fund, who's partnering up with the Illinois Food Fund, it's already approved. The CDEs, which are the new market tax credits, because the way that the property sits, it sits in a food desert. Obviously, for it to sit in a food desert, and given the fact that the altar just closed, it just, it makes all the sense in the world. I mean, the city, the city needs it, and the citizens need it. And I just can't understand where there's this disconnect. It shouldn't be me here begging you guys to do this. It's usually rehearsed, just for the record. And I don't get it, like I said, I'm not, I'm not asking for a handout. We're putting in real money in this, in this packet, every question is answered, all the way down to a floor plan, which, I don't have to show it. Our money's invested in, the CDE's money's invested in, the loans that are, the loans that are approved, who we're working with, everything's included in, how many jobs it's going to provide. Projections, our bios, I mean, everything you guys could ever ask for is, has been But I know that I've lost the deal right now. And I didn't want it to be like this. It shouldn't have to be like this. The citizens deserve this. Jason Barry took two trips to the store. I offered the council, through Jason Barry at the time, "Come on out and look at our stores. Come on down."
I'm familiar with the stores because I've been...
Oh, I know you are. I'm just trying to figure this out because right now, as we speak, I'm not on contract and I don't know if he's going to accept it. If I can get some, I guess I'm begging for something from the city which we can go back on contract amount if he accepts it. And here are the terms that he's going to accept it, just so everyone knows. Like, I said this from day one when I met a number of the individuals employed, I'm the most transparent guy you're ever going to meet. He's going to make you sign it, basically no contingencies, money goes hard right away. Which means I'm going to receive another hundred thousand dollars. So I just, I need everyone's help. This is a simple, a one paragraph letter saying, "Hey, we can do this." Or we can't. Well, certainly not sitting in little, but I've been sitting for five months.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Who have you been contacting to get a letter?
At the beginning it was Jason and then Jason Reader quit on July 5th, or he left on July 5th and went to Lamont. Thank God for Mark Miller, who's been answering every call, and Mr. Bolado has been involved now and every time I call, the gentleman answers, but there's no answer to the question. If I was sitting here for a handout, I'd understand it. But again, the only, the only thing that we're asking for is based on our own performance. The Class 8, as I said, it's a recommendation from the city to the county. If it, I'm rolling the dice, hoping that it happens, obviously.
And who would write the letter of recommendation then?
That's internal. I mean, usually how it's done, usually there is what we call a redevelopment agreement that is signed between us and the city. I've done that on two or three other projects. The only thing that I wanted right now is, I didn't even want to go that far, it's something to make us comfortable, to put up hard money and not lose, and not lose our contract, which we have. And I admit, I extended it, he was gracious enough to extend it, and now I'm off contract. And I, to be boyfriend, I don't know if I can even get the deal back. I'll go by, I mean, again.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, I was just wondering because I understand somewhat of the real estate business and what he's going through. What can we do to sort of expedite this man, bring in a grocery store in Blue Island so all of us can be able to shop there?
Again, we have a consultant. I'm looking for a consultant on what he's saying, whether we are in a position to do that. And then our legal team to see whether or not we can do it.
Okay. So, because I know because, you know, when deals slip away and things of that nature, there's distance and time between that, is it any way we can leave this man with some kind of, you know, resolvement of saying like maybe we can get back to him by next Thursday, Wednesday, Friday, or a day period?
I'm just telling, I'm very, very open. It won't work because my, we're not going to sign a contract. Again, I, I, the way that I've written every email to the city, and to you, Mr. Mayor, is I've left it, and I understand you're an attorney, I've left it so open where the city's not committing to anything. All the city is doing is making us feel a little bit better that eh, maybe we're going to work with you guys. That's all I was asking for, a maybe. And I can't even get that, but...
Who in the mayor's office are you writing emails to that?
The mayor's.
Just some air and if there's no response or...
I'll let him answer. I didn't come here to pick up on this. I came here to build a grocery store for this instance.
We want that and I know a month ago there was an email sent to Ali Alderman about incentives and I don't think we've heard anything since. So it's disappointing, I'm just, I guess I'm just spending, I'm disappointed that nothing's more important than this. So I'm sure you're more, it has disappointed.
Go ahead.
I agree with Alderman Donahue. This is a second time I have heard about this and just basically from the same email and go along with this. I just thought about it tonight because it's been so long that I almost forgot. We still have appointments for the city council. Mayor, any of these positions filled, any of these people appointed, we have a fire chief appointed. And it's been months now and I'm sure this is not the only issue that the council is not informed of, a timing matter. You know, going back to the appointments from May to this situation now and who knows who else is sitting down in the crowd or who doesn't even want to come and give us his presence at the city council meeting. I think it's very concerning.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Your fifty thousand dollar check was written out to the city of Blue Island, right?
No, no, to the owner of the property. To the owner of the property.
The owner of the property, okay.
It was fifty thousand dollars earnest money and then he wanted another fifty thousand dollars for us to go hard, which means we would, we've agreed, we've done all our due diligence. Part of the due diligence was, we got our financing, we got all the EPAs done and the environmentals, we did everything that we were supposed to do. Time ran out. He wanted another fifty and I don't even have anything from the city of Blue Island telling me what I was told that we were agreed to four months ago.
I'm so sorry.
Not more sorry than us, trust me.
I would love to apologize as well.
I'm in all my style.
Oh, I just wanted to comment that I went out to your Ford City Store. It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would also like to apologize because again, I had no idea that this was going on and how long have you been sending emails again?
The initial meeting with the city of Blue Island was exactly ten days before election. I'm just, I'm just going to wait out. Ten days before election, we presented this on a big billboard, obvious as election fact. I get it, I understand. We had a roundtable meeting with a number of the people, including the mayor. And then it was direct contact with Jason Barry. After about a month with Jason, he showed us the three things that we were basically asking for. Should not be a problem because again, you really do understand the dynamics and the economics of what the city's been through over the last couple of decades. I get it. And then Jason left and thank God for Mr. Bolado and then it was the rest with the mayor, at least for the last five weeks. Our concern is, is we're not, you know, we have to talk to a consultant. Again, it's not my first rodeo, guys. I mean, I've been part of fifteen stores, you know, six different cities, different It shouldn't be like this. It shouldn't be me up here begging. And again, I'm out the money now, it is what it is. But unless I can get something to my hands, I honestly don't know how to try to revive this thing. I lost this stuff, I mean...
Go ahead.
Mayor, I'll just plead one comment. I think this is embarrassing that we have a business man here pleading to us that he wants to do something, we develop, and there's been no communication to him for the last amount of months.
There has been communication.
Well, obviously, after a month that he wound up, obviously, well...
No, no, Mr. Mayor, no.
In order, well, I have to pour one second, Joe. We could be, we could be a dead horse here for hours. And I think it's in the best interest of the community, the city, and obviously from a business standpoint to make this happen. Now, what needs to happen is from your office, a meeting needs to be set up and if we need a consultant to help us walk through this, this project so that it's in the best interest of all of us, then that needs to happen.
In fact, the consultants may, on the consultant's account, but we've been asking them, I've been sending emails to the consultant. What he needed, he provided us the information, which he did, he submitted it to the consultant. Consultant told us...
Do we have a consultant?
Well, McKenna.
For specifically for this project?
Yes. Key McKenna, correct? So, work it out, I mean, as we've been trying to do it, I'm trying to move it as quickly as possible. And if I got the consensus for the council, we'll do it.
Gee, is it possible? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Alderman. I'm sorry.
I think that we ought to invite, we, I mean, the city of Blue Island, to give this man what he wants and as quickly as possible. If we have to work all night, let's work all night.
That's fine with me.
Or at least let him have a MOU or MOA that he can take to the, you know, to the people to push his deal.
That's, I haven't seen this.
I haven't seen any deal.
I've got one more, if anyone watches this, like, you know.
Ms. Green? Sorry. Nope? Okay.
Carol DePace Green, 2731 Orchard Street in Blue Island. I have a number of concerns. First of all, Blue Island is not a home rule community. Everybody knows that some of the manner in which taxes increases and fees are trying to be shoved through, that's the kind of thing you can do with a home rule community, but not a community that's not home rule. I'm very happy to hear that this fee issue is going to go before the Judiciary Committee and there will be public hearings because our Blue Island community is shrinking, it's not growing. Our seniors, and we have a lot of families that are poor working families on fixed incomes, they're not going to have thirty percent more to give to the city of Blue Island. Currently, three million dollars was borrowed from the water fund. I haven't heard anything about the intention of repaying that water or if there's been a forgiveness for that three million dollars that was borrowed in one point five million dollar increments. The money that was borrowed from the water fund.
Go ahead.
So, one of the things that would have helped and would have provided the city of Blue Island with the cushion that it's looking for right now would have been that three million dollars. The other issue that we have is with the golf course that has been financed by the Blue Island taxpayers for the last twenty-four years. The Blue Island Golf Course has never made enough money to sustain itself. As business owners, and some of you have been in business for yourselves, after twenty-four years, do you continue to finance a failing business to the tune of one point five million dollars? That's certainly a question that needs to be looked at because the residents really haven't gotten anything out of the golf course. There is, it's not generating revenue, it's taking away from monies so that in the event the golf course was possibly leased, if you accepted a lease at ten thousand dollars, the one point five would be money you didn't have to spend on the golf course and you'd get an additional ten thousand dollars from leasing the golf course. So that would be some of the ways in which Blue Island could save some money. The other issue would be to also lease the rec center. Right now, we don't have comprehensive children-centered programs down there. There are children who do need tutoring who live down there, who do need programming down there. And we have parents who are talking about what their needs are, who live down there. Golf scouts is great, boy scouts is great, adult basketball is fantastic, but what those children need down there because they're attending failing schools would be some tutors. Now, I did hear some talk about teachers from the school districts over there going there after they get off work to tutor their children. Well, we have some people on the council who teach and certainly, I think when they get off from work, some of them probably need to go home and spend time with their children, probably need to go home and spend time with their families. The other issue, issues that I want to talk about would be the flyer for the Blue Island barbecue that was an insert with the water bills. Usually, we get a monthly newsletter from the mayor. I don't know how this flyer was generated or how it got into the envelope with the water bills. At the bottom of the flyer is the city of Blue Island logo, the state Barbada logo, the school district 130 logo, and we know this is a Blue Island Park District document. Did the city of Blue Island, because our tax dollars are limited and our funds are limited and we're hearing that loud and clear, did you receive payment for this?
I can't answer that question.
Did you receive fifty percent of the postage that the water bills were sent with? I mean, if we're going to partner, let's partner with real dollars and cents and let's use some common sense for this partnering and not just hop on the backs of the Blue Island taxpayers. Because guess what? We're funding all of these separate taxing bodies and some of these taxing bodies have more money than Blue Island City Hall.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do want to give you copies of the petitions so you can have them.
Mayor, may I address just one part of her statements? And that's with the Recreation Center. I also have a company that we gave AB status to, a tax deferment to, that offered, and we're still in a deal of giving, they're giving us five computers for the Recreation Center. We're also working with Morangue Valley and District 143 and a half to have tutors and teachers to come there for those students and it's for the whole city of Blue Island, not for just California Gardens area.
But the problem with that Dexter is when the teachers from the school district 143 and a half, or is it 140, which one is it?
143 and a half, it's the substitute teachers.
Right. When they typically get off work, they're, and they're under contract, you know, with a sub.
Right, it's a sub, so it's on their off day, so they won't be working full-time jobs and then come there sleeping on my kids.
Well, that might, that might help some because those children over there absolutely need tutoring and I hear about that all the time.
Children all over the, over the world, over the United States. You know, we can't compete, we can't compete globally with them.
But Blue Island is not competing.
My thing is, I had conversations with the mayor, I had conversations with our director about bringing STEM programs, coding and different things of that for, to put our kids and give them an advantage to achieve and come back and maybe bring something back to the city. So what you're saying, you made a great statement, but it's already in motion.
Okay. How long have you been in talks for the STEM program and the coding?
About a week and a half on the STEM and coding, but the tutorial and the computers over a month, month and a half.
Somebody really should be able to help you get that going. Thanks Dexter.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Move on to the next piece of business. You're going to repeat after me, I need you to raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Josh Johnson.
Having been appointed?
Have been appointed.
To the office of firefighter?
To the office of firefighter.
For the city of Blue Island?
For the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
DuSally Square?
DuSally Square.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of the fire department?
Of the fire department.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations. You guys have any numbers? Yes, all of you.
We all do. Short people, short word. Let me get ready, I gotta get finished. Come on, everybody gather around. So I can see your face, make sure I can see your face. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Would you like to say something? You know, we're going to have you say anything.
I didn't say that, I'm sorry.
Yes, all of you. So I can see your face, make sure I can see your face. Would you like to say something? You know, we're going to have you say anything.
Obviously, I'm glad to be here. Full-time, full-time job for the city of Blue Island is an awesome achievement for me, and I'm proud to stand before you and serve the community to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Do we have a representative from Moraine Valley? All right, here we go. It's a resolution commemorating Moraine Valley Community College's fiftieth anniversary. Whereas founded by a voter's referendum in nineteen sixty-seven, Moraine Valley Community College District 524 is one of the largest public community college districts in Illinois, covering one hundred and thirty-nine square miles, and annually serving more than thirty-four thousand credit and non-credit students, gaining from twenty-six demographically diverse communities in the southwest suburbs of Chicago. And whereas Moraine Valley Community College is one of more than forty-eight community colleges in the state of Illinois, operated under the direction of the Illinois Community College Board, with accreditation from the Higher Learning Commission, and whereas over the last five decades, Moraine Valley Community College has been committed to student success by educating the whole person in a learning-centered environment, recognizing our responsibilities to one another, to our community, and to the world we share. And whereas the college is committed to continuous improvement while providing accessible, affordable, and diverse learning opportunities and environments, and whereas Moraine Valley has conferred more than sixty thousand, sixty-three thousand degrees and certificates since its opening, and serves one in every thirty-seven residents of this district, including more than twenty percent of the adult population in Blue Island over the past five years. Whereas two thousand seventeen marks the fiftieth anniversary of this important academic institution, and with events and celebrations throughout two thousand seventeen as declared at W W dot Moraine Valley dot ed dot rock solid, and now therefore be a result. Myself, the mayor, Domingo Hefarge, and the city council of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, and for, and on behalf of the citizens, that we congratulate Moraine Valley Community College upon its fiftieth anniversary, and encourage all its members of the public to join the college at its scheduled celebratory events. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made up record in the permanent proceedings of the council, and suitable copy here will be presented to Moraine Valley Community College. I will need a motion. Motion by Alderman Valado, second by Alderman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, or do we need a roll call? That's fine. Congratulations. Would you like to say something?
As a Moraine Valley Community College, we just like to say we're proud to have served the community for fifty years, and we hope you all will be able to join us for our fifty year community celebration this Saturday, from one to five P M. at our main campus in Pharaoh Hills. Thank you very much.
I'm going to give you this. I'd just like to, oh, Joe, you walked out so fast. Mr. Murphy, I want to recognize the man who's got a lot to do with keeping, or bringing Moraine here and all these stuff to the community. Let's give him a big round of applause. And again, with council's approval, any other questions? I'm going to hold off on this next item on the agenda, and then we set a meeting as early as next week to address the issue regarding the rate increase. Do we need any candidates? Can we table it? Need a motion to table it? Yes. Yes. I need a motion to table it. Motion by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Thompson. Roll call, please. Any questions?
I'd want to make a roll call, the vote on.
Okay. We've got a motion, we have a second. We have to turn down the table first. Okay. We got the table first. There's a second, Alderman Thompson?
She's here.
We got a roll call now. This is the table.
Burnwell?
No.
No, Burnwell, no. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
No. No.
Carr, no. Pittman?
No.
Pittman, no. Slattery?
No.
Slattery, no. Hulos?
No.
Johnson?
We should table it.
Johnson, aye. Frosto?
No.
Frosto, no. Valado?
No.
Valado, no. Rita?
No.
Rita, no. Donahue?
No.
Donahue, no. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Nine, no.
Now, is there another motion? Make a motion to vote on this. Motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Alderman Rita. I've got other questions. Any questions? Go ahead. Since I made the motion to bring it to the table, I made the motion to bring it to the table so I can vote no on this and send it back to committee, so we can have public participation and public hearings. I was on the board committee as chairman, we had four public hearings before we made any major decision, I feel this should give the exact same precedent to this. So, my vote's going to be no when it comes to the vote. We got a second, Alderman Johnson?
No, there was a question, Mayor. Only because of somewhat what Alderman Valado stated, trying to see if we could truly get the vote of the people, to maybe make a motion to put this as a referendum on ballot, so they can vote on it, since it's coming out of their pockets.
Any other comments from the other Aldermen?
I guess I have some process questions. I heard it was at Finance Committee three times, so you weren't aware of it, Mayor, so why, why didn't you send out an email, letter? You sent out emails and letters and phone calls about church and family stuff, everything?
Alderman, I didn't put this on the agenda.
But she still, but she knew about it, and as you let us know back in June, you are the mayor, and you are the leader of the city, and you're not a C P A, but you are aware of the issue, so why couldn't you not explain the issue before? Because it's insulting to me as a taxpayer, it's insulting as an Alderman, that I wasn't made aware of it, none of the Aldermen who were made aware of it, who weren't on the Finance Committee.
Well, let's put it this way, again, I didn't put it on the agenda. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. It was supposed to continue discussion for the future.
But if you're not including anybody in the discussion, Mayor, how, how can the discussion go further?
Which discussion?
The discussion on the water increase. If you're not going to include the Alderman, include other people in it, how can the discussion go further?
You're not part of that.
You had Alderman send me an email about Blue Mass, and what's going on in your family, and call your birthdays, but a synopsis of this a month ago, two and a half months ago wouldn't have been nice.
It wasn't going to be on it. Go ahead.
Yes. As Chairman of Finance, I wanted a special meeting of the whole, for the full city council, to discuss this, that fell on deaf ears. I requested packets with the same information Finance received from Dave Meyer, the C P A consultant, to be sent to every Alderman, that never happened. So...
Go ahead, Alderman.
So, as the chair, when Alderman Donahue was the Chairman of Municipal Services, and we're working on the garbage contract, he sent out personal emails to all of us, inviting us to that committee meeting. Alderman Rita did the same thing. If it fell on deaf ears, why wouldn't you do diligence and make sure everybody's got it? Phone calls, emails, letters in the mailboxes in the city. I mean, we want people, hold on, I'm talking, we want people to be okay with this rate increase, but we want to just give them blindsided information. It should be like when we voted on the one percent increase, when we vote on the liquor licenses, when we voted on the ward maps, we had public hearings. Your council and your administration, our administration runs on transparency. We're not doing that. We're blindsiding everybody. I'm supposed to go to my constituent store and say, hey, listen, I have a thirty to forty-two percent increase for you, please vote for me next time I run. That's not going to happen.
Well, let's ask this, who actually put it on the agenda?
You're the mayor!
That's what I'd like to know, who put it on the agenda?
You're the mayor!
I was on the deck, a family guy.
You're still the mayor!
Because I know I put the one of the firefighter in the Moraine Valley, and as you see how it's placed, that was one, two, and the third one is the ordinance, and then Mayor's comment.
But you don't reach out it before it gets sent out, even if you're not here or unavailable at the moment?
Go ahead.
And Alderman Oss, I appreciate, I didn't know you tried to do that. Who, who did it fall on deaf ears to? I think that's part of the bigger problem here, is at least you made the effort to improve myself, and Alderman Rita, and the members who aren't on the Finance Committee, so who, who dropped the bomb and not letting everyone else know?
I don't know. It was discussed at my meetings, it was brought up at my meetings, I reported it at all of my minutes that we were discussing this.
No, I think, I think, I didn't, I think, I'm not trying to gang up on you, or it's not, I think there's a bigger issue, that we're not getting informed information, and like Alderman Slattery said, we're being blindsided by this. There's, it was sent out on packet on, it was sent out in a packet on Friday, no explanation from the mayor's office, no call, hey, support this, don't support this, this is what we need it, what it was going towards, who was going to fund, so it's, it's insulting, and it's embarrassing, it was, it's embarrassing sitting up here today, hearing the gentleman from the Water Greens property speak, having the Water Property speak, and the problem stemming from the mayor's office. Again, who put the agenda out?
That me?
But you're the mayor! You're the mayor! Guide to chef, we're right now, we're a captain of the chef.
Alderman, go ahead.
Vote no.
I'm on that Finance Committee meeting, and I voted no from the very beginning, no increase, came a no from Alderman Thompson, representing the Fifth Ward. No. That's what I said then, and I'm saying it now. No.
Good. Go ahead, Alderman.
There's obviously a legitimate question about process here, it's very important, that that is being addressed, and I hope that we'll be handling it in a good and a positive way in the end. I would like to say, so that this doesn't get lost in the discussion, that I know Alderman Thompson, I respect her very much, and she has strong held opinions on this, which I do respect, which I also disagree with, on Finance Committee, and I do feel that this rate increase is important and necessary for the city. I do believe it's important that it get a full public hearing and discussion and comment, but I urge everyone to keep an open mind to this, despite some of these issues that we've got going on here tonight can be distracting. This is important to the city, don't lose track of it as we talk about it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Just want to close with, again, bringing up synopsis here. Appointments, Water Greens property, the rate increase, and these are just the three things that came out tonight, and who knows what we don't know of. We need more communication, our communication is terrible at this level. It comes from the top down, we have no communication from the mayor's office to the Alderman, lacking information for the last few months, and it's a major concern, and I'm feeling embarrassed like my fellow Alderman that we had to go through this, and you guys witnessed this. Thank you very much, Alderman Thompson. Anybody else? Swain Alderman.
I think Alderman Johnson, did you make a motion to have this put on referendum?
I did, and but what's on the floor is, we're supposed to be voting on table and not to table, but the thing is, you know, leave it up to the residents, leave it up to who the people who voted, and put us in office. I'm not saying I'm voting, truly not voting, but the thing is, you know, when we started beating them streets, asking for these people to vote for us, I think we need to put this, because I pay whatever my mom can't pay, and I have to pay my own stuff as well, so, and she don't get no overtime, she got Social Security, she ain't got three and four jobs.
That's right. After the...
So, what do we have the motion on this, I need to pass this? Roll call, please. Burnwell? Sorry, the motion again is?
Is to pass this, be...
No.
Burnwell, no. Ossling?
No.
Ossling, no. Thompson?
No.
Thompson, no. Carr?
No.
Carr, no. Pittman?
No.
Pittman, no. Slattery?
No.
Slattery, no.
No.
Hulos?
No.
Hulos, no. Johnson?
No.
Johnson, no. Frosto?
No.
Frosto, no. Valado?
No.
Valado, no. Rita?
No.
Rita, no. Donahue?
No.
Donahue, no.
Thank you, the same way I would, thank you very much. No. Next, mayor's announcements, you already heard what I told you, hurricane, Harvey relief in the Irema. Again...
There's a motion, is there?
For what?
Dexter made a motion? No, there was a motion...
We threw it.
To vote for this.
Well, I made a motion for it to be put on a referendum to vote for on the next ballot.
Do we have a second? Please, Alderman Thompson? The problem is, it wasn't on the agenda, yes, so we might have to put it on the next city council.
Okay.
Okay? All right, we...
How many days do we have for to put on?
Yeah, we have to find out. If it's, of course, how much, we'll try to find that out as soon as possible. Now, are we going to table a referendum?
It's dead.
Okay, that's fine.
In the public hearing, we're going to want it in court, because it's dead right now.
Right. Again, back to the hurricane relief, again, requesting all our citizens to cooperate as much as you can, contribute as much as you can, to reputable institutions for the Harvey relief, Irema relief. City clerk's business.
Yes, I am going to make a motion to a council to pause from boot camp, the whole hurricane, the candy tag day fundraiser on Friday, October sixth, and Saturday, October seventh.
We have a motion. Alderman Carr, we have a second, Alderman Valado. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Burnwell?
Aye.
Burnwell, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Hulos?
Aye.
Hulos, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto?
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Valado?
Aye.
Valado, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye.
Thank you very much. Any bids?
No bids.
City Twitter?
I want to check out the, this is a statement of the month, for the financial statement of the month, reconciliation statement.
Any motion? Accept reconciliation statement? Got a motion by Alderman Ossling, second, by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Burnwell?
Aye.
Burnwell, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, no. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Hulos?
Aye.
Hulos, aye. Johnson?
No.
Johnson, no. Frosto?
Aye.
Frosto, no. Valado?
Aye.
Valado, no. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley?
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Love, aye.
Thank you very much.
do, before this comes through, 'cause normally we have to prepare for what we have to do with the consultants, to see if we have to go through another tax anticipation, or not, before the end of the year. But the tax anticipation warrant, the last year was paid for five hundred and ten thousands, just some dollars.
Any others?
Last thing is, yeah, and I don't speak that often, but when people come up to the top and question mine, I bother integrity. I've said before, we don't interming though funds for the water. Okay, the water is specific funds used for specific reasons. Okay? General fund, the corporate fund, those are the only two funds that are now basically not restricted. As we broke this down last time, to show every Alderman and the public that, if you see it, okay, on our website, is that it's broken down to restrictive and non-restrictive. Okay? And when people start throwing things out, that whatever figures you were throwing out are not justifiable, it's very inappropriate. If you have questions of something, bring it up before, and then if you don't get an answer, then go to the floor council. But you wanna just be a showboat in front of cameras and stuff? Don't question stuff. Question me in a proper profession. You have the opportunity to question, call, ahead of time. If I don't give you a satisfactory answer, or the finance department doesn't give you a proper, then you have a break.
Any others?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. City attorney? Nothing? Committee reports, committee, I'll let them in.
No report, your honor. We did meet on Thursday, I'll have a report at the next meeting, or, the next city council.
Thank you very much.
Our next meeting is October the 5th, at seven o'clock. Here council chair.
Thank you very much. Finance Committee?
Finance meeting was called a quarter on September 5th, 2017, at seven o'clock. Members present: Alderman Hawley, Alderman Fairwell, Alderman Thompson, Viera, Alderman Oslin, Abseckus, Alderman Frosto. Also present is Deputy Finance Minister, Lori Brown, Special Project Supervisor Mark Miller, Director Rita, Treasurer Valado, and William Stolberg of A&amp;A Midwest. Citizens present were Rita Humbles, Rachel Oresko, Don Lorenz, Kathy Kuner, and Carol DePaisere. Under public comment, concern residents of Blue Island advise on tax breaks on residential property, and their concerns for tax breaks on businesses. We have a payroll, dated 8/25/2017, in the amount of three hundred sixty four thousand, three hundred eighty seven dollars and sixty cents. A motion by Alderman Fairwell, second by Alderman Viera, to approve, motion carried, and I make a motion to city council.
You have a motion, do you have a second? Alderman Fairwell, any questions? Roll call, please. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Oslin. Aye. Oslin, aye. Thompson. Aye. Thompson, aye. Carson. Aye. Carson, aye. Pittman. Aye. Pittman, aye. Slattery. Aye. Slattery, aye. Hulos. Aye. Hulos, aye. Johnson. Aye. Johnson, aye. Frosto. Aye. Frosto, aye. Valado. Aye. Valado, aye. Rita. Aye. Rita, aye. Donahue. Aye. Donahue, aye. Holly. Aye. Holly, aye. Thank you very much.
Accounts payable for September 6th, 2017, in the amount of five hundred two thousand, three hundred twenty five dollars and sixty two cents. A motion to accept by Alderman Hawley, second by Alderman Viera, motion carried, and make a motion to city council to accept.
You have a motion, second. By Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roll call, please. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Oslin. Aye. Oslin, aye. Thompson. Aye. Thompson, aye. Carson. Aye. Carson, aye. Pittman. Aye. Pittman, aye. Slattery. Aye. Slattery, aye. Hulos. Aye. Hulos, aye. Johnson. Aye. Johnson, aye. Frosto. Aye. Frosto, aye. Valado. Aye. Valado, aye. Rita. Aye. Rita, aye. Donahue. Aye. Donahue, aye. Holly. Aye. Holly, aye. Thank you very much.
Under new business, Mark Miller advised on the class six E tax incentive for 13033 California. William Stolberg explained his business, which stores and processes auto parts to salvage to be useful parts for export. Treasurer Valado also explained the sales tax that goes to Blue Island. Much discussion by residents and the committee, class six E was tabled until September 19th. No further business, the meeting was adjourned, a motion by Alderman Fairwell, second by Alderman Thompson, motion carried, meeting adjourned at 7:30. Our next meeting is September 19th, 7 o'clock, East Stand.
Thank you very much. Public�owers.
Uh, yes, your honor, we hold a meeting tonight, those minutes will be, uh, right at the next city council meeting on September 26th. However, um, we did have a resolution authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement by and between the village of Posen, city of Blue Island, and the village of Milotian for a multi-jurisdictional gang suppression tactical agreement. It was approved, um, there was a motion to approve by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Hulos, I'd like to put that part of the motion.
Got a motion, you have a second. By Alderman Rita. Any questions? Roll call, please. Oh, go ahead.
I was just wondering, was this at your last meeting, or tonight's meeting?
It was at tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Um, all the council members had a copy, so it...
You mean all the committee members?
No.
No, it was in the package.
It was in the package.
Well, I know it was in the package, but it hadn't been voted on by the committee until tonight.
Until tonight.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Oslin. Aye. Oslin, aye. Thompson. Aye. Thompson, aye. Carson. Aye. Carson, aye. Pittman. Aye. Pittman, aye. Slattery. Aye. Slattery, aye. Hulos. Aye. Hulos, aye. Johnson. Aye. Johnson, aye. Frosto. Aye. Frosto, aye. Valado. Aye. Valado, aye. Rita. Aye. Rita, aye. Donahue. Aye. Donahue, aye. Holly. Aye. Holly, aye. Thank you very much.
We have a resolution authorizing execution of memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Blue Island, the city of Chicago, Cook County, city of, telling that city, city of Chicago Heights, town of Cicero, village of Dalton, city of Evanston, city of Harvey, village of Maywood, village of Riverdale, and the village of Skokie for the 2017 Justice Assistance Grant Program Award. There's a motion to approve by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Donahue, I'd like to put that part of the motion.
Got a motion, you have a second. Alderman Fairwell, any questions? Roll call, please. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Oslin. Aye. Oslin, aye. Thompson. Aye. Thompson, aye. Carson. Aye. Carson, aye. Carson. 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 Carson, aye. Frosto. Aye. Frosto, aye. Valado. Aye. Valado, aye. Rita. Aye. Rita, aye. Donahue. Aye. Donahue, aye. Holly. Aye. Holly, aye. Thank you very much.
We have a resolution authorizing execution of memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Blue Island, the city of Chicago, Cook County, city of, telling that city, city of Chicago Heights, town of Cicero, village of Dalton, city of Evanston, city of Harvey, village of Maywood, village of Riverdale, and the village of Skokie for the 2017 Justice Assistance Grant Program Award. There's a motion to approve by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Donahue, I'd like to put that part of the motion.
Got a motion, you have a second. By Alderman Hulos, any questions? Alderman, go ahead.
Questions? Alderman, is it any kind of resolution, try to put something together, whether they get insurance, or we get insurance, or get a net there, or, you know what I'm saying, something?
I don't know the answer to that question, there was some discussion in committee about that. And I know there was a meeting, and I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know what resolution was. I know there's some, some interest today is looking for some ways to work with residents on this, but we don't feel it's appropriate to, uh, grant individual claims of golf ball damage, because, uh, it's difficult to prove it, um, and there's some issues regarding the residents, they have advanced knowledge, and they're moving into a situation where they have higher property value, because it's a golf course, and there's a risk of damage. So, basically, our position is that we don't want to approve individual claims.
There's another question. This, uh, this sort of, actually, we're talking, uh, Dr. Rita said that it might be a good idea to move some trees, and redirect some of the hits, to minimize, not remove, but minimize the amount of damage that's done to the residents, because the way that cut that hole, this particular hole you're talking about, is set up, it bites problems. So we're thinking about re-landscaping that particular hole, so it would make the golfers, without slicing, of course, hit the ball in a different direction.
And Alderman, I might also point out that, uh, in both of the cases, the golf ball damage, we're gonna talk about tonight, the claims really not have sufficient documentation also.
Yeah, that's another question. Okay, just, I'm, I'm just saying, because, I'm asking, you know, for knowledge, and the next thing I know, is I don't know what the situation was with the last demonstrations, because, you know, the golf, of course, they've been there, so I don't know that either. And, um, to legitimize some things, you need to have documentation.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
He's on motion to deny. Yes, roll call, please. Yes, sir. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Oslin. Aye. Oslin, aye. Thompson. Nay. Thompson, nae. Carson. Aye. Carson, aye. Pittman. Aye. Pittman, aye. Slattery. Aye. Slattery, aye. Hulos. Aye. Hulos, aye. Johnson. Epstein. Thompson, abstaining. Frosto. Aye. Frosto, aye. Valado. Aye. Valado, aye. Rita. Aye. Rita, aye. Donahue. No. Donahue, aye. Holly. Aye. Holly, aye. Thank you very much.
All right, the third, uh, claim is 2017-12100, pot hole damage to a tire. Uh, the committee voted to deny this claim, to recommend denial of the claim, uh, because, um, there is a question from the city attorney about liability, the city has in any event the driver's obligation to exercise negligence, uh, when in the roadway, and the fact that it's difficult or impossible to validate, the claim is actually valid.
So you need a motion?
I need a motion, yeah, motion.
They make a motion. Motion to deny. Alderman Hulos, any questions? Roll call, please. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye. Oslin. Aye. Oslin, aye.
claim, uh, because, um, there is a question from the city attorney about the liability that the city has in any event, the driver's, uh, obligation to exercise diligence when in the roadway, and the fact that it's difficult or impossible to validate the claim is actually valid.
So you need a motion?
I think motion, yeah. They make a motion.
It's got a second. By Alderman Hulos. Any questions? Roll call.
Very well.
Aye.
Very well, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Nay.
Thompson, no. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Hulos?
Aye.
Hulos, aye. Johnson?
Epstein.
Johnson, abstaining. Frosta?
Aye.
Frosta, aye. Valado?
Aye.
Valado, aye. Rita?
No.
Rita, no. Donahue?
Aye.